Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting, tonight's board of appeals meeting, and tonight's committee of the whole meeting. We welcome you to Geneva's City Hall. We begin our meeting by asking our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno, Burghart, Ruby?
Here.
Kavan?
Here.
Kilberg?
Here.
Casarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Alderman Bruno is traveling this evening, and Alderwoman Burghart is attending a conference for her professional development. So we have eight of the finest council members present in that. We begin our city council meeting with the pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask our birthday girl, Stephanie Dawkins, who celebrates her birthday tomorrow, to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steph. We have lots of cool things tonight, folks, so we're going to begin with cool thing number one. And that is to receive a very generous contribution from Energy Fitness and Well-Being to the Geneva Mental Health Board. I'd like to invite our madam chair, perhaps first, to introduce this cool thing.
Yes, thank you so much for having us this evening. We were here, I think, at the end of May, early June, to share with you what the board and students at the high school and middle school and some of the businesses in town had done to promote May as National Mental Health Month. And when I was sharing that with my trainer, who is one of the co-owners of Energy Fitness and Well-Being, she said, wait a minute, I want in on that. So she said, explain further what you're doing. And I said, well, as part of our mission, we do some education and advocacy work, especially during the month of May, to promote the messaging that, you know, it's okay to not be okay, and that we're all in this together and keep talking and sharing amongst one another because, you know, we're each here for one another. And she said, well, I would like to promote that. So she said, give me some time to think about that. I said, okay. So the next time I went in, we chatted further, and I explained that we tie green ribbons around town to promote May as National Mental Health Month with ribbons and the plastic. She said, can you get me some of those ribbons and some of those bows? And I said, oh, yeah, I can get you some of those. So then, she said, you know, I got an idea. I get that you want to spread the message. That's probably one of the most important pieces of your work. And I said, oh, yeah, absolutely. And she said, then, I'm going to put forth a request of our clients, my clients, that for a small donation, they could buy one of these big green bows you make and the strip of green ribbon, and they go home and they tie it around a tree in their yard. She, Alan and Kelly are both Geneva residents, but they serve clients from most of the tri-cities. So she said, you know, then we're spreading the message further. And I said, no, that would be great. We would love for you to do that. So then I think the story goes that Kelly went home and shared that, that with Al, or maybe the two of them had come up with that together. And then Al, who owns Clearwater Capital Wealth Management Company, said, you know what, we're going to make a little challenge here. We're going to, we're going to match or yet improve whatever donation your clients at Energy Fitness and Well-Being come up with. So that's exactly what took place. So the whole month of May, Kelly had ribbons and bows available at the front desk when you came in, and all of the clients were super generous. And then she came up with her total and went home, and Al came up with a very significant match, five times the amount. So I would like to introduce them tonight. Would you, Al and Kelly, approach the podium? I'd also like to I'd also like to acknowledge two of our other board members are here this evening, Susan Finson and Jean Gaines.
Absolutely.
Both of those members were very instrumental in helping with the green ribbon efforts in May. And I am always so proud to share about my colleagues because they truly are all in, and it's a pleasure and a privilege to work with them. So, but this is Kelly. Kelly is co-owner, Energy Fitness and Well-Being. And Al?
Hi, Kelly.
Hi.
And I want to mention that the, if I'm talking too much, you can kind of, one of the things I would like to mention is that it is called Energy Fitness and Well-Being because there is, there is very much a messaging of total well-being. And so your physical health is obviously a priority, but very much is your mental and emotional health promoted there. And it's a very family-focused business. And in looking at Clearwater Capital's mission and about information, one of the things that came leaping off the page in the beginning was that they were founded on the principle of stewardship, and that became very clear and obvious right away. So this is Kelly and Al.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Thanks. I would just like to add, Suzie did a great job talking about what we had wanted to do. When Al and I opened up my gym, our mission was not only to improve ourselves physically, but mentally as well, which is why I call it Energy Fitness and Well-Being. I think of it more as a wellness center than I do as a gym. We must take care of our whole being. And Al and I are at a point in our lives where giving back to others is really important, and we're capable of doing that in a variety of ways. And I think since I've owned, we've owned the gym, we've really taken on a variety of charities, and really, my members have come great ways to help and give back in so many ways that we've led the effort, and they've just stepped up and really done wonderful things. So when Suzie came and was sharing that this was Mental Health Awareness Month, all I kept thinking was, we got to do more. We've got to do more. Don't we all know somebody who has something going on in their lives, right? From the pandemic to illnesses to deaths to all kinds of things. And all I kept thinking was, what can we do? What can we do? And then she was sharing how they were decorating the city, and I'm like, well, gosh, that's a no-brainer. We've got to pass it on. You know, I live in Geneva, and I've got people in Sugar Grove and St. Charles and all over. And I'm like, yeah, we're going to, we're going to get the message out there. And I went home, and I'm telling Al all about this, and Al's like, well, this is what we do. And we're going to, we're going to challenge our members more because we're going to tell them that my company's going to match it by five to try to kind of generate more generosity. And so we're excited. We're really excited to be able to present to you tonight two checks. The first one is from my gym for $300, and then the second one is from Al's company for $1,500.
Wow.
So we are very honored to be part of that, and we look forward to seeing good things from it. So thank you.
Oh, my gosh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Our pleasure, our pleasure.
Really impressive.
Yeah.
Kelly and Al, would you mind if we took a quick photo as well?
Oh, sure.
Sure. But first of all, I got to ask a question. Share with everybody where your studio is located.
Oh, sure. Thank you. So my gym is located, most people know the Turf Room. That's usually a pretty good landmark. My gym is in the strip mall in front of it. It faces Orchard Road and Randall Road. It's a boutique gym is what it is, and it's in that strip mall. I have two storefronts. And so I do small group personal training, I do private training, I do team training. I also teach yoga and spin classes there. So a variety of different things, from kids, young, to really, my population is really our age of clients. And what's so great is, as Suzie explained, it's such a family-oriented gym. So I teach not only husbands and wives together, I teach their children, I even teach some of their parents, like their grandparents. So it's really lovely. So thank you for letting me share that. But I'm off at Orchard Road, 1055 West Orchard.
Know exactly where you are.
Yeah.
Wow. Have you always been involved in the health industry, exercise industry, or?
Well, I was a reading tutor for the Geneva School District for 10 years.
Wow.
And then I made a lifestyle change, and I felt so great that I thought it was a new avenue that I could help others. So I decided to pivot from helping kids learn how to read to helping others lead healthy lifestyles.
Wow.
And so I pivoted to the health business. And so I've been doing it nine years.
Fantastic.
And on my own for two.
Is, just off the record, is Al a member of the gym?
Al comes in on Saturdays. Otherwise, Al's in the office.
I'm also the handyman.
Oh, is that right? Yeah.
And my accountant. Yeah.
That's really neat.
Yeah, thank you.
And Al, extraordinarily generous of you and your firm.
Oh, thank you. We, as part of our firm, we also created a foundation, so Clearwater Capital Foundation is where the contribution actually came from.
Okay.
So every year, we also do some different programs and sponsor different organizations. And it's, again, we feel that from the success we've had in our private wealth management firm, that giving back to the communities and supporting different needs is very important, very important to us. So this is a, you know, small way that we could, we could give back.
It's a very important way as well.
And we look at every opportunity, and, you know, as Sue said when she looked at our website, it is very apparent that one of the things that we do is try to give back to the community.
Of course.
Anybody wants, is looking for money, look at our website. We do. We look at it very, very openly and are always looking for good causes to share our, our success with, so.
That's really neat. And according to my notes, you're going to lead us all in some exercise classes right now.
Now, that would have been fun. Another day?
We'd have to turn the TVs off for that.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Do you mind if we get a quick?
Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, of course.
Sue, Scott's a member of the gym?
He is.
But you're not? Thank you again, Kelly. Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 3B, folks, is to consider mayor's appointments of Jennifer, I believe it's Palolo, Michael Plozek, and Kathy Sabiani to the Cultural Arts Commission. We have several members, here they are, look at this. Mr. Chair, do you want to say anything? Kathy, you and I are neighbors.
We are.
Isn't that something?
Yes.
Temporarily, because I'm moving out August 1st, but we'll erase the tapes, that's not on there, so.
I'm Tim V. Tang, Chair of the Geneva Cultural Arts Commission. We're real pleased to present three names for approval by the city council this evening. Two of the openings were created during the pandemic, and were open for an excess of a year. But we were wanting to be able to interview the people face-to-face because the arts and the programming we do involves the public and a lot of interaction. So we held off during that time period. Plus, we weren't having many events, as everybody is aware of. So when we put the application process in, we were really pleased with the applicants. I'm always amazed at the talent and past experiences of people who apply for these type of positions. So it was a difficult decision, but we were very happy with the three candidates that we chose, and we look forward to a lot of new and exciting ideas for the arts in Geneva.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we do have, one of the candidates is here.
Yeah, come on up, yeah. I said that we're neighbors because we're, Amy and I are currently living in my mom and dad's condo.
I thought so.
In beautiful Kentston Court.
Yes, yes, so.
Paid rent in months. It's a heck of a gig.
Under normal circumstances, you'd be hearing me playing the ukulele and singing from my balcony in the evenings, but I
Now, see, I didn't want to say anything. You're the ukulele lady.
I am the ukulele lady.
The young lady on the second floor.
Yes.
Obviously. You're literally kidney-corner from where we are.
Yes.
And she plays a beautiful ukulele and sings.
Yes. I'm a retired elementary music teacher. I also have taught music at the collegiate level.
Let me apologize for calling the police the first that I heard you, because I didn't know what that was.
They look worse than I do, so, yeah. No, I fell off my scooter and broke, so, yeah, because I'm really nine years old.
Yeah, well.
But, yeah, very excited about being on this committee.
We're delighted.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the council for our friend Kathy? Ukulele, I mean, you've always played the ukulele?
No, I started out playing guitar, just sort of campfire strummer, and was teaching my college students some basic guitar skills, and some of them already played ukulele. They said, really, we should try ukulele. It's easier, you can carry it around with you, it's less expensive. And I said, all right, we'll all learn together. And, and we did. And now my poor guitars are gathering dust because the ukulele's so much more fun.
You know who else is a guitar player, is that guy?
Really?
Alderman Maladra.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right.
He used to, he had a contract with Shaky's Pizza, played the banjo for about 20
Oh, my goodness. That's a couple weeks ago.
Remember Shaky's Pizza?
Unfortunately.
It was good living, man. I can't wait to hear you play again on the patio.
Shouldn't be too much longer.
Good, good.
I got a few minutes in the other night, so.
Awesome, awesome. Welcome aboard, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion, ladies and gentlemen, to approve those recommended appointments to the Cultural Arts Commission? Mr. Swanson makes the motion?
Second.
And Mr. Marx makes the second. All in favor of the appointments, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Welcome aboard. Thank you very much. And now we have the pleasure, folks, of introducing the city of Geneva's brand-new facilities manager, Mr. Pete Adams. Mr. Adams, welcome.
Hi.
How are you? So July 5th was day one.
Yeah.
Man. Now, do you mind if I read a little, little bit about you that you provided?
That's what I gave it to you.
Who did you provide this to?
Stephanie.
Oh, was it, oh, this is direct from the, wow.
With no edits.
With no edits? What's your wife's name, Pete?
Christina.
Christina, is Christina with us tonight?
No.
And two little?
She might be watching remotely.
Oh, good.
I don't know for sure.
I see a William.
Hmm?
A William, yeah?
Uh, William's my dad.
Ah, Dad's doing it, yeah. Oh, my God, this is awesome.
Very interested in the whole job search process and interview process and everything, so I sent him the link in case they wanted to watch.
Did you send him the link?
Yeah.
Did you? Oh, my goodness.
I'm from Batavia, so they're interested as well beyond that, but
Are you a bulldog?
Yeah.
No kidding?
Yep.
Cool, man. Now, you have two little girls, seven and 10.
Yep.
And what are their names?
Natalie is the older one, and Emily.
Nice. Are they watching too, do you think?
Uh, they'd be logged in if they were, so probably not.
Close to bedtime.
Nah, not yet.
Oh, good. So now, since here, you graduated in 99 from Batavia High School.
That's correct.
Okay, cool. Currently live in the west side of Montgomery.
Mm-hmm.
And these are your words, man, big Bears fan.
Yes. Borderline fanatic.
Yeah? Why is that? Is that, is it, is it?
Well, you got to be a fanatic to stay with the team through the last several years in particular, but
Are they moving to?
No, I mean, I really am just like a hardcore passionate Bears fan.
Are you, do you have season tickets?
No.
No?
No.
So you're really not that big of a fan?
I back it up with spirit rather than dollars, I suppose.
Well, there you go, man. Are they going to move to?
A passionate supporter, I just don't throw a lot of money behind that.
Smart move. Are they going to go to Arlington Heights?
Hmm?
Are they going to move to Arlington Heights?
Almost certainly are. It'd be silly if they didn't.
You think so?
Oh, yeah.
You know, I don't
Statistically, it makes too much sense not to do it.
Did you hear that Geneva, Batavia, and St. Charles are actually bidding on them? We're actually going to build a stadium?
I did not. That'd be interesting.
That would be your first project.
I'd be curious to hear where that's going to go.
That would be your first project, Pete.
Sounds good. Sounds good. That's one I could get attached to.
I bet you could. Just see your mug on the Jumbotron the whole time?
Uh, don't need that. Just tickets to the game would be good.
Attended to Wabonzi Community College, then off to Illinois State.
Yep.
Redbird. Did you live in the dorms when you were?
Uh, just for one semester, but yeah.
Is that right?
Hmm?
It's a neat place, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very different. It's a, the dorm I lived in doesn't exist anymore.
Oh, is that right?
Yep.
Were you in charge of their facilities at that dorm, or is that?
No.
No?
Hamilton-Witten was the buildings that I was in. They've torn, I can't remember what's there now, but they've torn down like half and replaced like half the campus that was there when I was there.
It's amazing. The downtown's gorgeous, too.
I was there about three years ago and barely recognized it.
I believe the mayor of Bloomington owns a bike shop.
Hmm?
Isn't that right? Well, the mayor of Normal owns a bicycle shop. Yeah. Oh, well. So after, after ISU, you headed into the residential construction superintendent, then commercial superintendent, facilities manager.
Yep.
So this is in your blood.
I guess so. Um, when I was in college, I was looking for an internship to do between junior and senior year, and been working, collecting some sort of a paycheck, paperboy, whatever, retail a lot since I was about nine years old. So I'd worked enough retail to know I didn't want to do that, and seeking opportunities, the only ones that were really available, readily available to me through the school at least, were Illinois State and Polte, or, sorry, Illinois State Farm and Polte Homes.
Oh, sure.
And Polte Homes was in Chicagoland where I live, and, you know, the other one wasn't, so. Polte Homes offered me an internship, and then they offered me a job at the end of the internship, you know, as long as I graduated. And it was decent job market, but not so good that I was going to turn down a good-paying job waiting for me upon graduating.
Exactly.
So I sort of fell into it. I was a business major in college. I didn't seek out construction management, but it just, it clicked pretty well for me, so.
That's really cool. And Polte's one of the big boys.
Hmm?
Man. Now, this is a, I think this is a very eye-opening and very honest comment you included here. In '08 and '09, all heck broke loose, and you found yourself having to reboot your career.
That's accurate, yep.
Yeah, I mean, the whole world fell apart.
Yep.
Man.
Wasn't fun.
No, I could imagine. And then you switched over to IT project manager.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I worked for a little Monpa IT Services. I say Monpa, I'd employed like 25, 30 people, Mon, uh, services company out of Aurora called Thai National Accounts.
Not as in the Thai Beanie Babies?
No.
Okay. How did I know that?
Did you know that?
Did you know that?
Spelled different, too.
Yes, it is, thank you. Do the girls have Beanie Babies?
No. Those haven't been popular for, I don't know, a while.
Thank you for bringing that up. I know, I know. I've got, I've got about 300 in the attic.
Nice. If I keep them long enough, they'll probably be worth something.
Exactly. Well, that's cool, man. Most recently, worked at your alma mater, Wabonzi Community College, for seven years.
Yep.
That's a heck of a run.
Yeah, I was there for a while. For that place, not, but for normal careers these days, that was a long time, yeah.
And Wabonzi Community College, as you well know, the president calls Geneva home.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Sobek.
Yep.
Retiring after a 20-year distinguished career.
I guess longer than 20. I would say 20.
Has 20 as president, maybe?
No, she can't be the 20th president.
No, 20 years as president.
Oh. Maybe 20 years as president.
Yeah.
That might be right, yeah.
And the campuses have just blossomed.
Yep.
They're beautiful. Of course, that's always in part to your good work.
Well, they were beautiful before I got there, but I helped keep them that way.
That's amazing. What attracts you to our community?
Um, the opportunity first and foremost. I, you know, familiar with it. I found out about the job opportunity. So Mira Johnson, the HR specialist, lives in the same neighborhood as me. Her youngest daughter goes to school with my oldest daughter. They've been in school together since kindergarten.
Oh, wow.
And so, and my wife, Christina, actually runs the Girl Scout troop that her daughter's in as well and that sort of thing. So they're Facebook friends, and that, she posted about the job, and Christina saw it and was just like, hey, this looks an awful lot like you. And so I, you know, looked into the opportunity.
That's cool.
And it looked like a really good fit. It's very similar to the role that I performed for Wabonzi, not a, not a match dead-on, but it's a very similar role. Beyond, I mean, I'm familiar with Geneva. Growing up in Batavia, I spent a lot of time in and around Geneva.
Sure.
Especially as a young adult and that sort of thing. I love the attachment to historical integrity and stuff of this community. I've always geeked out on historical buildings, more farmhouses, to be frank about it, but I just love historical buildings. I haven't had as much opportunity as I'd like over my career to work on historical buildings, so I'm like really excited to get a chance to kind of sink into that a little bit. Um, I'm trying to think beyond that. I mean, I, it just, it seems like a really good opportunity for me where I can like apply my skills in a place where they're useful and needed as well, you know?
That's exciting. We're very proud to have you onboard. So far, so good?
Yeah. I mean, I'm, it's just, data, 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 just taking in as much as I can, you know, trying to assess the building, you know, review and go check out the facilities, collecting as much information as I can from coworkers about how the different collecting as much information as I can from coworkers about how the different departments interact with each other and stuff like that. With Ben on Friday, you know, collect his feedback and things, you know, trying to, you know, if I'm gonna make recommendations about what we can do to make City Hall more functional, I gotta understand how City Hall works. So I'm trying, you know, trying to just take it all in as much as I can and, yeah.
City Hall, Public Works, Police, Fire, and I, I trust you've been advised that we expect to report this Friday?
Uh, no, that's news to me.
You have not heard that yet?
It's okay. I got four days to get there, then. I'm good.
Yes, you do. Dad, your dad's online. He heard that, too. Counsel, any comments or questions for Mr. Adams? We're delighted to have you on board.
Okay.
Yeah, we look, we look forward to working with you.
All right. Thanks. I didn't think you guys were gonna go that easy on me.
Yeah, no, this.
Thanks.
Wait till tomorrow.
Okay.
Where are you hanging out in City Hall right now?
Um, downstairs, just behind the reception desk.
Okay.
Or, I say, uh, I went pointing the wrong direction. Downstairs, that way. Yeah, right below you.
Sounds good. Welcome aboard, Pete.
Thanks.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Now, folks, we have, uh, the joy of, of welcoming a team from the Union Pacific Railroad. They're gonna share with us some updates regarding the Third Main Line project. For those of you who have, uh, heard from our friends at the UP before, you probably remember, uh, one of our good friends, Lisa Stark, who has presented before. Lisa has received a promotion and is, uh, moving at the end of the month to beautiful Omaha, Nebraska. We believe that Lindsay, who's joining us tonight, is gonna be succeeding, right?
Yes, that's right.
That life is good, Lindsay. And Lindsay, just so all of you know, was very clear in telling me, it's spelled this way. L-I-N-D-S-E-Y.
Yes, after he asked, I sure did tell him.
Yeah, because there's multiple ways to, yeah, because Lisa had two I's.
I, I am not nearly that unique.
A railroad thing. It's like, very interesting. So, and you have a team with you as well, so please introduce all of us to your team, and then the floor is yours.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, with me tonight, I, and they'll wave or probably just wave. Um, I have Claire Anderson, Craig Crisp, and Rick Conrath with Benish. Um, they are intimately familiar with this project. Claire has worked on this project, um, for a very long time. And, um, Craig is kind of stepping into Claire's former role, so they're kind of a, a tag-team group on this. Yes. And then Rick, Rick obviously has worked, uh, on this project with us from the design side, so. We are very excited to be here tonight. So, Mayor, Council, um, thank you for having us and allowing us to come and, um, provide an update for you. So this project has been going on for quite a long time, um, but for anybody that is not familiar with it, I wanted to just give a brief background on kind of how we came to, um, explore this option and ultimately move into construction. So our, these, this is our, uh, territory right now that we share with Metra. So the commuter trains operate over Union Pacific on the North Line, the Northwest Line, and the West Line. What is unique about the West Line and why we are pursuing this Third Main Line project is because we have quite a bit of overlap with commuter service and freight service. That was causing a lot of challenges. Um, I hear from folks, uh, about delays on the West Line, trying to get into and out of the city, um, because of freight interference. And so one of the things this project is going to do, and I'll talk more about those benefits, is really help to preserve Metro's performance, um, for the commuters as well as, um, help us on the freight side as well. So some of the, you know, this original agreement started in 2008, so this has been going on for a while. Um, and this has been a UP and Metra joint, uh, effort. We really appreciate the partnership with the city, um, and the other communities along the West Line that have already, um, had their construction go on. Uh, we were seeing a lot of fluidity issues. We had real safety concerns around some of the Metro stations. So part of this project that has been, um, multiple phases, has addressed a lot of those safety concerns. We still have a few more of those improvements to do with this final phase. Um, this is kind of digging into those specifically. So we have, um, completing pedestrian gate coverage, um, ending the, or, um, the end of the platform diversion. So really just trying to control commuters, not having them cross. That top picture on the right scares me half to death, um, crossing, you know, where there isn't a pedestrian crossing, making sure that we're, we're moving people to the safest point possible, um, to cross. Um, and then including some additional fencing, really to, to control that behavior so that people are, are behaving in the safest way, um, to really keep them safe. Uh, this project, uh, the, this is a little bit inaccurate. We just clarified, um, at dinner before we came to the meeting. This final phase is $102 million, and that is just the West segment. So there are that bottom line that says East and West combined. 102 is really what's remaining in construction, um, for this final segment. So the big update is that we have a contractor. Uh, we are working on finalizing that agreement with our contractor now. We expect that we're going to start construction mid-August. That doesn't give us a whole lot of time before the end of the construction season, um, but we're hoping to get a really good start. We expect this project will take between 24 and 36 months. The original estimate was kind of up to two years, um, with some of the challenges that we're seeing in the supply chain and materials. We're thinking that that's going to extend this project out and, and might be hitting that two-and-a-half-year mark. One of the biggest questions that we anticipated we would get is, what is the construction phasing going to be? When are you gonna be at this location? When are you gonna be at this location? Um, we are still working with the contractor on that, uh, but what we would like is to extend the offer to city staff to be part of our weekly construction meetings. We have provided them the list of events that are going on in the city, um, so that any closures or any work could hopefully avoid interfering too much with those events. But we would want the city to be a party and a partner with us, um, throughout the construction of the project so that you can, um, communicate to us any challenges that, you know, our construction schedule might provide. So that's really brief, but I've got the whole team here, so if you get too deep on me, which Mayor, I have a feeling
Oh, no, gosh, no.
From the previous conversation, you might go deep.
No, we, this is new to, I didn't know we had a railroad track, so this is exciting. I want to open up the floor. If you don't object, Lindsay, to our council members, uh, if there's any specific questions, concerns, curiosities, the floor is all yours, so. Mr. Kocerog.
Thanks for coming. I think everybody in Geneva's been curious about this, so this'll be a nice update. Where I'm at, I don't know if you're familiar with the golf course on the West Side, Eagle Brook. You guys cleared a lot of trees for the Third Line. Is there anything you're doing about replacing those trees eventually? I've gotten quite a bit of calls about both concern for the trees and the fact that they buffered the noise. So with three, three rails, there'll obviously be more noise. And, uh, obviously that, that buffer's not gonna be there as much anymore.
So one thing, um, I might turn to one of my teammates here to answer the question if there was any kind of mitigation for, uh, replacing trees. One thing that we have discussed is that the clearing that was necessary for the project has been done. So there won't be any additional trees removed, um, in anticipation of construction. Uh, one of the things this project does improve is reducing idling. So there, there's a lot of noise that can come from that as well. And so hopefully, you know, the residents will see kind of an offset a little bit, you know? Maybe there's an increase in traffic. Three tracks doesn't necessarily increase trains, but will hopefully help move them through the community faster. Have we had any discussion about, was there any mitigation agreements or?
I, I love how the teammates just jumped up to provide that information. Claire, come to the microphone and join us. Welcome, Claire.
Hi. Um, so the only place where we talked about actually doing replanting of trees would have been along the parks, um, at Western for Sunset and Dryden, but not in that area specifically. A lot of times for us, as we go through this and actually have to do the construction there, we really don't want trees there because they just grow in and infringe on the signals. So for us, it's more important to be able to actually see those, those signal mass as they're coming through, and that will be a retaining wall.
Right? No?
It's just a very steep slope, so there's not really a good way for us to get into the ballast and plant a tree, per se, that would actually give you that type of sound barrier. It would still be at the base, at the golf course, which you would still have noise. So, um, I don't know that there's a best way to mitigate that.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, one thing that is in, no, you're good. Um, one thing very much in, in my wheelhouse as well is through our Union Pacific Foundation. If there was interest in, you know, I don't know that it would necessarily help with the noise piece, but if it was bringing more trees to the community where maybe you felt like it was lost through the construction project, UP Foundation does provide grants for community spaces. So if there was, you know, a project that we wanted to work on together and, and there was a grant opportunity, you could apply for grant funds through Union Pacific Foundation, and that is something that we are invested in as well, so.
We are a Tree City USA and proud of it, so I think that sounds very intriguing.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I'm also your point of contact, not just on this project, but for any, um, issues within the community. That's me. I'm, uh, Public Affairs. So anything that kind of comes up, if you guys have questions or you want to work together on a project, please feel free to contact me.
Have your cell number to tell all my constituents?
Sure, I'd be happy to provide that to you on the side. No. Yes, of course, of course.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, no problem.
Anyone else? Ms. Mayor, then Mr. Swanson?
Hi, I'm a daily commuter into the city, so I use the train a lot. I was wondering, so most of the stations where there's more than two tracks, there's actually like a tunnel or some sort of overpass or a way for commuters to get from one side to the other if there's, uh, interference. Is there anything planned for Geneva, uh, for the station to accommodate that?
I don't believe so. No, we don't have a grade separation, um, for pedestrians at this time, but we're, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So will the freight train, if, if there is a freight train, will it take the center track then? Is that the priority system or how does it work?
Yes.
Okay. So we won't get, well, we, we already do get trapped on one side of the tracks when trains come in and leave because they get too close to the signal to allow pedestrians to cross. It just sounds like it might be a compounding of that problem for us.
I think the, by having three tracks, we're going to be able to run those trains through to where they're not waiting at a signal. Um, so I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna have that compounding effect that the intention is to allow more fluidity, um, for the trains traveling through. So this should improve waiting, whether it's waiting after you've, um, gotten off the train, waiting for train traffic to clear. That should all improve with this project by adding more capacity. I'm gonna pause and look back and see. Claire's got one more comment.
That's why.
Just don't go so far.
Yeah, just sit right there.
So that's why we installed the another train warning signs as part of the safety project before, so that those trains can pass and somebody who's waiting won't walk out in front of a train that could be just going through on the center track. So that's the intent, is that they will not.
Those are great.
Yeah, that they will not be stopping.
It, it's just that, you know, in the morning, if you park on, on the lot to the south, there is a desire of people in Geneva to cross over to the north side to get their train.
Oh, you mean from the commuter trains?
Yeah.
Being stopped?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So when they stop, yeah, it.
Yeah. I'll take that back.
Yeah, yeah. We'll take that back and, and we'll visit with Metro about that, too, and see if there's something more we can do. Thank you.
And then I have, uh, one more question. Are, are you gonna phase the construction to try to avoid rush hours? Or is there gonna be a schedule?
Yes, yes. There will be, there will definitely be a schedule, uh, with where we're planning to be during construction. I think there are elements to the project that it's not gonna be kind of like closed for a certain number of hours and then open again. I think you're gonna experience longer closures. We were talking about 31 needing to be closed for bridge replacement and expansion, and that's gonna last, what did we think?
16 weeks.
16 weeks.
Is that a total shutdown of Metra across the 31 Bridge then?
Not Metra.
No, not Metra.
Traffic. Car traffic. Mm-hmm.
Oh.
So your commute will actually end at 31?
Okay.
Yeah, no.
That's the difference.
No, we're, we're.
Park there.
Yeah, part of the construction agreement is to maintain commuter service throughout construction. There's gonna be some road implications, and we want to coordinate really closely with the city to try and reduce those as much as we can and, and, and not interfere with, with local events and things like that as well.
Okay. I still don't have an idea of how it's gonna impact my commute.
I understand, and we're, we're working on that. So I think that's, there's gonna be more information that's going to come out. Uh, we wanted to get with you all and provide you this update so that you know that construction could start happening. You might start to see people out there, um, as early as the middle of next month. Um, as, as we fine-tune that construction phasing and that schedule, there will be more information provided. So, uh, to you as a customer, but also as a community leader.
Okay. Thank you.
You haven't? Well, I'm just.
Claire has something else she'd like to add.
Sorry, I know. I'm just like.
Just stay out there.
Lot of meetings in the last three years. Um, we don't work during the rushes. So if it was, it would be an emergency or it would be really well-informed, like months out, if there was gonna be an effect to that, and it's very short-lived. Metro does not like to have the rushes affected.
Thank you. That's really what I wanted to hear.
Thanks, Claire.
Mr. Swanson, then Mr. Kilburg.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in, and, and it's wonderful that something is finally starting. It, it seems like we've been waiting and waiting and waiting. And, and you touched on my questions, and that was the closure of Route 31 Bridge. I, I know you mentioned that the scheduling hasn't occurred, but in, do you have any general idea when the 16-week closure of the bridge would be?
We don't at this point. I think, um, we want to try and address that early on in the construction, um, and we're trying to look at ways that won't, that we can still do the work that we need to do, and it's not too cold to do that, and also not interfere with festivals and things that are going on locally. So we're trying to kind of, oops, trying to pinpoint that on the schedule, um, but we don't have it nailed down yet.
Okay, because you, you gave a two-to-three-year window. That's a big window.
It is a big window, yes, but we were gonna start there, kind of at the early stage of construction.
That's the hope, but the, the biggest, there's a microphone. The biggest issue, again, is supply. So if there's portions that take longer, it'll just be, hopefully, as you're coming to the meetings and actually sitting in and listening on what's happening, then we'll be able to give you a better window.
Okay. And, and my, my next question is related to that as well. I believe the pedestrian bridge across the Fox River will be closed for a period of time when the bridge work is being done. So again, the question would be when, when that would be.
So it just depends on some of that. For the majority of the work, we're just gonna be flagging people to go through. Uh, you may have to stop while we're setting a span and then be able to go back, but we're not fully closing it at any point, so.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Kilburg?
Uh, just a couple of questions. I see that there's some material already in the parking lot. Uh, what, what are they staging at the present time? Uh, or am I mistaken? That's not your, that's not, not related to this project?
Right now, on the Geneva, we have three separate Thai gangs that are working, and that has nothing to do with the Third Main.
Okay, that's just routine maintenance.
Yeah, routine maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes, we have a very large Thai project going on. Yes.
Okay, good. And the, the next question is, um, a little bit unrelated, but, uh, if I remember correctly, over the last two or three weeks ago, I noticed that there was some resistance that you encountered on the, on the Northwest Line as it relates to freight traffic and, uh, um, the fact that there's going to be increased freight traffic through some of those communities like Barrington and so on. Is, was that involved you, right?
I don't believe so. Um, I think part of that discussion, and I'm, yeah, it's the CN. So there's, there's a discussion within the industry, uh, Canadian National Railroad.
Okay.
Is exploring a merger, no, wait.
Right.
CP. CP is exploring a merger with, um, Kansas City Southern.
Okay, so UP isn't involved with that?
We are not involved with that.
Now, obviously, this is going to facilitate some level of improvement in freight, freight traffic.
Yes.
Through Geneva. Do you have any kind of an anticipation of, uh, let's say over, once it's completed, over the next five years, what is that going to do to, uh, a, a higher level of freight traffic through Geneva? Is it going to be 10%, 20%? And I know maybe that's not, uh, known at this time because it, uh, it's, it's so far out. But, uh, would it be realistic to say, if we're asked, is this going to mean more trains through Geneva of a freight nature? Is it safe to assume that that's a yes?
Um, I think at UP, we hope that we have growth. But what we've seen since this project started, we had a lot more trains coming through. So the slide that I showed, and I'm gonna bounce back to this one. When I updated the slide for the briefing this evening, just two years ago, we had, um, 60, or maybe it was 70, Metra trains, and then we had 56 UP trains, um, on this line. So it was a huge increase. Um, Metra is still recovering from the pandemic. So we anticipate that they are going to want to add trains at some point. Um, Union Pacific has lost coal volume on this route, um, and that business is probably not coming back. And then another part of that reduction is just the way that we're operating. We've, we've lengthened some of our trains, which actually.
That's what I was gonna ask next.
Yes, which actually reduced the number of trains coming through. So as we are, you know, looking at our system, again, we hope that maybe we see increased volumes, but that's not necessarily going to equate to increased trains. So that, I know that's kind of a long answer.
I understand.
Um, but that's, that's kind of where we're sitting right now.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Anyone else in the dais who hasn't had a chance to ask a question before I recognize Mr. Kocerog for a second time? Brad, all yours.
The Western Avenue Crossing in Geneva, um, I understood, I just wanted to double-check that there were safety improvements, sort of the same ones that happened here on Third Street with the other train coming, and things like that. I just wanted to see if that was still on the, um, the plan.
We've, I don't think that, I know we have, we're gonna have ped gates there, but it won't, I don't think there'll be another train warning signs there. Those were only in at the stations.
Okay.
As I recall, too, there are gonna be pedestrian gates. Right now, there's just that little teeny stop sign. So that, that will all be improved. So there will be some improvements, but it won't have that flashing sign.
I don't know where I got that from, but that's why I'm asking the questions, so.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and will that, how long do you expect that shutdown, or do you not have any idea at this point? Like, are we looking at the same kind of four months kind of thing?
Our crossing closures are usually two, two weeks.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Claire.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Sorry.
Floor is open. Anyone else from the dais who has a question, or? We appreciate very much you being with us.
Well, thank you, yes.
We look forward to working with you as well, the whole, the entire team, so.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, and just anytime that you guys have questions or would like additional information, want us to come back for, you know, an additional briefing, just holler. We're happy to come and explain where we're at in the project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be safe, everyone. Brad, item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk on this agenda can be considered and approved with one motion. Is there such a motion? Mr. Swanson makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Caven. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocerog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye. With eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, the omnibus agenda has been approved. We jump to item 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk, who is to read in their aggregate the bills for our consideration. Excuse me.
The amount is $3,499,239 and 39 cents.
This, this is a doozy. Bruno's not here. Bruno's not here, Berghardt's not here. Anyone care to approve the bills to be paid?
Sure.
Sure. With enthusiasm, Alderman Swanson makes the motion to...
I'll try again. How's that? So, Mr. Mayor, I, I motion that the municipal bills for payment, as mentioned by the city clerk, the details of which are enumerated in our packet, as well as on the city website, be approved for payment.
Well done. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Yep. Second.
You can do it next time, Maladra.
Kocarog it is, then, okay. Any questions or comments regarding those bills? If not, Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Swanson?
Aye.
Ruby? Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
With eight votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, the bills have been approved and will be paid post haste. Item 12A, consider ordinance number 2022-32 granting a sign variation to increase the maximum allowable sign area upon the State Street facade of the building located at 302 West State Street from 40, I believe that's 40 feet, 40 square feet, to 55.23 square feet, located at Even Flow Music and Spirits LLC. Is there a motion to put this on the floor? Mr. Marx makes the motion?
Second.
And seconded by Kocarog. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so Even Flow is a live music venue restaurant and bar with two points of public ingress and egress. One is along West State Street and the other along Third Street. Per the code, the subject property is allowed to have two signs per facade with street frontage. However, each set of signs cannot exceed a combined total of 40 square feet. Prior to 2019, the signage at Even Flow met the sign code requirements. However, in 2019, a new wall sign was installed without a permit. The new wall sign exceeded the size of the previous canopy sign. The new wall sign, in combination with the existing vertical wall sign, brings the cumulative sign area, along with the West State Street frontage, to 15.23 square feet beyond the maximum allowed 40 square feet. A sign variation was applied to, applied for to increase the maximum allowable sign area from 40 to 55.23 square feet, and at its meeting on June 9, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended denial of the variation because the commission felt the hardship presented was, was generated by the applicant not following the City of Geneva's review process for sign approval. So in this case, if the city council wishes to overturn the recommendation of the commission, that would require a two-thirds majority vote of the city council, so that would be seven affirmative votes tonight. We do have Chayton True with us this evening, and I don't know, are the applicants here? And the applicants are not here. So if you have any additional questions, Chayton would be happy to answer those for you.
From the dais, are there any questions for Mr. True? Seeing none? Anticipating none? Oh, forgive me, Mr. Caven?
Yeah, this is more of just a point of order. So why is it, why is the two-thirds majority to, to overturn something that's coming from a recommending commission as opposed to changing what a code is? I don't know if anybody can kind of clarify that, or...
It's just the statutory requirement. I, I don't...
Okay, so any, so anytime anything gets recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, we got to do it with a two-thirds majority vote regardless of what?
It's a variance, and I think the variations are different than anything.
Okay.
So that was kind of a broad, yeah. It's not anything and everything, but there are certain things that statute requires.
Okay.
And then I would point out, just because I don't want people to be confused, the ordinances are always written in the affirmative. So in this case, if you vote to approve the ordinance, that would be granting the variance. And overturning.
Right.
The Planning and Zoning Commission.
Voting affirmative is to give the variance.
That is correct.
Mr. Kilburg, sir?
Yes. Could someone on staff, let me know, was Even Flow notified, and were they made well aware that this was on the agenda this evening?
That is correct. I did receive an email.
I assume it was, but I wanted to make sure of that. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Just to clarify, per Mr. Caven's statement earlier, the word granting in this paragraph states that if you vote affirmative, you are granting that variance. So the motion on the table isn't the affirmative. If you choose to support the request, you are voting aye. If you choose to stay the request, you vote nay. Mr. Caven?
So this was installed in 2019, and I know that they just had the here, you know, they, they applied for the, applied for the variance in the beginning of June. Did somebody just not notice for a long period of time that it had been changed, or, I mean, that's a couple of years ago?
Yeah, I mean, Chayton can address it, but we had been in contact with them, and it was a matter of getting them to come in and file a application for a variance.
Okay.
And then also during the, during the pandemic, we basically did not do anything that would affect businesses. So while we had waived licensing and all of that, we didn't feel it was appropriate to go in and start, for lack of a better phrase, dinging businesses when we were trying to make sure all of our businesses stayed viable.
So I did not see that zoning meeting from that Thursday, but I guess my question would be, and maybe somebody else on council can help, do you think that they would have been likely to grant the variance? Had they done this in the correct order and come forward and done that rather than putting the sign up? Prior to going through the actual process? I know you can't necessarily speak for somebody else, but I did not, I did not view that one.
Yes, so I think one thing that the Planning and Zoning Commission took into consideration was that it was put up, and then they applied for the variation. It wasn't the standard process that we encourage applicants to go through.
So it's possible that they could take it down and then go through the process in the correct order and have it approved and be able to put the same one up if they were to approve the request?
I could say it's possible.
Okay, no, I just, when this got brought up and I saw this, I'm in the downtown area pretty frequently, and especially then I found out that it's, it was a couple of years ago, I never noticed that, I never noticed anything changed on the front of the building. I didn't have any idea either. I realized that the city had been, you know, working to get a hold of them. I wish that they would have done this in the right order because I think it actually looks, I think it actually looks pretty good. I don't, I, I didn't even notice that it was different, but anyhow. Thank you.
Mr. Maladra?
So, Chayton, I'll ask it a different way. Are you aware of any material problems with the sign that they've got up? I mean, we talked about asking you if they had followed the process, would it have passed? I, I think that's a guess. Is there any practical reason for objection to this sign?
To my knowledge from the Building Division, I don't think there's anything structurally an issue with the sign. And I think that's about all I could say about it, is that it's, there are no safety issues known right now.
Won't fall on me when I walk in.
Exactly. We, we hope not, so...
All right.
And just to kind of be clear, though, even if they applied for the sign permit originally, they would have been told at that point that it did not comply with code, so at that point they would have either redesigned the sign or gone through the variance process.
Ultimately, we have the process to make sure that this doesn't happen, that we can step them through the correct procedures to make sure that it meets code and it can stay up.
Anyone else? Is everyone clear with respect to the motion? The motion's in the affirmative to grant the variation. An aye vote means that you support the petitioner, and you would grant that variation, and nay vote means you would support the ruling by the Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of, got it? Seven affirmative votes are necessary in order to grant the variation, as indicated. No one objects. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Marx?
Nay.
Mayor?
Nay.
Swanson?
Nay.
Ruby?
Nay.
Caven?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Kocarog?
Nay.
Maladra?
Nay.
With zero votes in the affirmative, seven votes in the negative, and two absent, excuse me, eight votes in the negative and two absent, the motion has failed. Public comment, new business? Anyone joining us this evening? Any public comment regarding either what has transpired this evening? Anything on your mind? Questions, comments? The floor is yours. Hi, welcome.
I am a resident of downtown Geneva, and I am super excited to be here because of the art festival. We love it. And I'm on the board at the Catholic Corner, and to show our support and because we have so much local talent, we are coinc, at the same time, having artists come in locally who do sculpture, painting, and other religious artworks, some are private collection pieces. And we've uncovered a piece that was purchased at the art exhibit 20 years ago of Mother Teresa that we will be having for public display. And it's really our way of trying to tell the city how much we love what they do and how it, you know, brings so much joy, brings the people together. We're a community business. We're a nonprofit that does community service projects, and so we just love this opportunity and wanted to let you know how much we appreciate it.
That's very nice. Could I trouble you for your name so we can capture that for the record?
Absolutely. It's Kim May.
Kim? And the last name is spelled?
M-A-Y.
It is, okay, got it. Thank you. That's very nice of you. Thank you very much. And it's supposed to be a nice weekend, apparently, right? Warm, but that's okay. It's always warm, right? Anyone else joining us? Anyone online joining us from the dais? Any new business? I happily entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Motion offered by Mr. Marx. All in favor of adjourned in the council meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, and we'll transition to the Board of Appeals meeting in just one moment. Ladies and gentlemen, I proudly call to order the City of Geneva's Board of Appeals meeting. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call, and we are serving as the Board of Appeals tonight, not as the committee of the whole nor the city council.
Bruno? Berghardt? Ruby?
Here.
Caven?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kocarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
I kindly ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the December 16, 2019 Board of Appeals meeting. For those of you who were with us back then, that was regarding a business downtown Geneva that some of you may recall. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted? Mr. Maladra makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Caven. Any questions or comments?
Given that this occurred two and a half years ago, is there a way that we could circulated the draft minutes, you know, on a more timely basis after the meeting? Because obviously, we can review it online, but after the fact, 30 days or whatever, after they're drafted up would be much easier for us to look at them in the future.
Sure.
So I was wondering if we could make a process to do that going forward?
I don't see why not.
I understand why they're being approved tonight, but seeing it two and a half years later is a long time.
This is a test.
There you go. Thank you.
We've, we've actually changed fonts over so, so...
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Since I wasn't at that meeting on the council, should I abstain?
It's up to you. There's no material harm to supporting it or you.
Okay.
With that, we have a motion and a second to approve those. Madam Clerk, what the heck? Take the roll.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Abstain.
Swanson?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Abstain.
We have six votes in the affirmative to approve the minutes, two absent and two abstentions. We move on to items of business. Ladies and gentlemen, I will read this, and then I will turn the floor over to Ms. Dawkins for a brief explanation as to why we're here this evening. Item 3A is a hearing on the appeal of the building code official's decision that the existing fence located at 1457 Keim Circle, Geneva, Illinois, is 60134, combined with the installation of a powered safety cover, does not satisfy the barrier requirements outlined in the International Swimming Pools and Spa Code as adopted and amended by the City of Geneva. With that, Ms. Dawkins, the floor is yours. Excuse me, a motion to open this hearing regarding that matter. Kocarog and Kilburg, I believe it was?
So the owners of the property have a fence that does not meet the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code as amended, which requires that the horizontal members of the pool barrier, i.e. the fence, be no less than 45 inches. The ISPSC provides for exceptions to the barrier requirements when a powered safety cover that complies with ASTMF 1346 is installed. However, this city code was amended to eliminate the exception for powered safety covers. The building code official concluded that under the ISPSC, as amended by the city code, the proposed use of the existing fence and a powered safety cover cannot be authorized. The city's building code official does not have the legal authority to allow alternatives to the barrier requirements. However, the city code does provide for a Board of Appeals consisting of the older person sitting as a committee of the whole, who have the authority to grant relief if they find that the proposed barrier requirements provide an equally good or better form of construction as prescribed by the ISPSC and the city code. The owners in their appeal have asserted that they have installed mesh around the fence, making it difficult to place the foot on the lower horizontal rail. They intend to alter the existing gates to comply with the requirements of the ISPSC and to install a powered safety cover that complies with the ASTMF 1346, and that the owners have an alarm system and exterior cameras on each exterior gate with motion detection. The owners also assert that with these improvements collectively, they provide an equally good or better form of construction as that prescribed by the ISPSC and city code. So with us this evening, we do have the applicants, and we also have Building Commissioner Eric Nelson, who can answer any additional questions or provide testimony as you desire.
I'll defer to the Board of Appeals. Would we like to hear first from our neighbors? And welcome. Welcome, sir. Welcome, madam. Thanks for your patience.
Of course, thank you.[1612.02]
Of course. Thank you. Thanks. I'm Andy Wilson. My wife, Kim, is here as well. We've been residents of Geneva for almost 20 years, residing at 1457 Keim Circle. We did put in a fence, starting in 2019, not for the purposes of a pool, but for the purposes of keeping an elderly dog who was wandering the neighborhood within the boundaries of our yard. And so, we did get that fence properly permitted at the time for that purpose. Once the pandemic hit, we determined we didn't want to have a pool because we're going to stay in this location. We're empty nesters now, but we've decided to stay in Geneva longer term, and we wanted to have a pool for recreation. In our view, our fence, our fence is four feet high, which does meet the guidelines, and the guidelines, from our understanding, from the, both the city employees, as well as our pool design team of some of the surrounding communities. The only difference is that 45 inch between the two bars. We have 36 inches, not 45 inches. But with the additional actions that we're taking as outlined, we think that that more than meets the safety purpose for the pool, and would ask that this appeal be granted.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
From the dais, are there any questions for Mr. Wilson or Mrs. Wilson? Mr. Kocerog?
Thanks for coming. I've supported the Wilsons in coming here and taking this action tonight. They do reside in the Second Ward. And so, I just wanted to be honest about that. I've met with them this morning, talked and emailed with Ms. Wilson several times. And so, you know, I just wanted to say that I do recommend this. This is not somebody who's just getting out of, you know, a pesky requirement or zoning issue. This is somebody who takes good care of their yard, their house. And, you know, I'll ask him a couple questions, but, you know, it's just one of those things, I think, that a reasonability factor should allow a little variance here in terms of the one horizontal bar, I guess that's too low, and then the difference in the two horizontal bars. Those are the two issues, as I understand it. So, I did want to ask you, Mr. Wilson, so you've taken other actions to, to, sorry, getting out of words, hard to spit out here, to address the safety issues that might be lacking because of the fence, right?
That's correct. We're installing different gates, because the gates were, obviously, to not allow a dog in and out, not to, not for safety from that purpose. On Saturday, we actually, our audiovisual people just installed cameras that now have full view of both the gates and the pool, which was something we wanted to do anyway, just to ensure that we didn't have any issues with the pool regardless of the fence. We also, my wife just bought a pool alarm, which will be in the pool as well when the pool is open. So we take safety very, very, very seriously.
What is the pool alarm do?
It's a floating-like alarm, so it will actually, if there's contact in the pool, you pull it out when you're in the pool, but if there's contact in the water, it senses that, and it will actually set off an alarm.
Okay. I haven't heard of those.
They're on Amazon.
I guess if Mr. Nelson would come up for a couple of questions.
Please, join us at the podium if you could. That's okay.
The cameras that are on our house are also motion detectors. So when there's a motion in our yard, dogs, people, whatever, I get a notification on my phone. So even if I'm not home, we'll know if there's someone in the yard, and I'll be able to see right away. One of the sounds on one of the alarms is an actual exterior siren. So if I hit that siren, it will make a sound. So if there's, if I feel like maybe there's something I can't get to fast enough, I think our neighbors would notice. But I think it'd be really difficult for someone to not be aware that there's someone in our yard. But it's really hard to get there. We have adult neighbors on either side with adult kids, mostly, high school age, and then the golf course. So that's...
Did the alarm sound when Mr. Kocerog came over?
No.
No, we did not trigger it.
We have to audibly make that sound. Yeah. So, yeah, so I guess I could have, but I didn't. Okay.
The panic button.
Am I good?
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. Nelson?
So I was just wondering if you could describe what you think the intent is of this rule about the horizontal bars, or...
I think the reasoning is safety, obviously, number one. Little kids will find a way to get over certain obstacles and stuff, fences included. So I think someone came up with that dimension of 45 inches. I don't know who, but someone did.
So, a little kid climbing on that first lower horizontal bar?
I think that, well, it's the spacing of the pickets.
Okay.
They're four inches, a little bit less, that it actually gives a kid a foothold to get up and over the fence.
Okay.
If the pickets were closer, I think it's inch and three quarters, two inches, then it doesn't matter where the bars are, as long as they're located on the inside of the pool property.
Gotcha. When did this, did Geneva always have this law, or was part of that amending it back when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago?
It's always, well, as long as I've been here, 12 years, it's always been that. 2015, 2018, we adopted the 2015 code, and they specifically called out if you had a power-covered pool cover that met certain requirements, you did not need a fence. We wrote that out.
Okay. But what, do you have any professional opinion on a fence, plus the pool cover, plus the cameras, plus the alarms, plus the gate?
I really don't. I mean, far as I'm concerned, you can't be too safe.
The building commissioner's position is a unique one, simply because he has charged not only his oath of office, but his duties as a professional to follow the code.
Right.
He does not have the authority to either say, hey, this seems a little too restrictive, or this isn't restrictive enough, hence we sit as the Board of Appeals.
And just to clarify, it was October 2018?
Okay.
When the last time the council adopted this exception.
And that's when this rule particularly went into place. Gotcha. That's really all I had. Again, I just think it's, you know, helping some long-term residents of Geneva out. I believe that their replacement fence, if ordered in, either request here would be $20,000. And I guess that's my position, and I hope you all agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the dais? Ms. Mayor?
I just, I've been pointing out to people, it's not for you, Eric.
Okay.
The, my neighbors have a pool, and they have this exact same fence, probably permitted in the 2010, early 2000s. My house had a pool when we moved in. We don't anymore, but we have the same exact fence. So it's a very recent change, I would say, and I support voting in favor of this variance or this appeal.
Appeal. Anyone else from the dais? There's not a formal motion on the floor. If anyone wishes to make a motion, I would ask that they... No, I don't believe it is. I believe the motion should read, quote, "Grant appeal of the building code official's decision that the existing fence is not in compliance," et cetera, et cetera. So we're going to exchange...
Grant the appeal.
Grant the appeal. But if you want to read the details, that's in there. So, bottom line, are you interested in granting the appeal? If so, I would entertain a motion to grant the appeal. Motion by Kocerog to grant the appeal, seconded by Mayor. Any additional comments or questions? The floor is open. Yes, Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. I just want to confirm, so an a vote approves the appeal, and they don't have to do anything with their fence. They can keep their existing fence, and it's approved.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. And I just wanted to thank you both for coming tonight. Honestly, I wasn't sure how I felt about it before the meeting. Was looking forward to hearing more about it. And I missed, I got caught up on the horizontal spacing, and I missed the overall height of the fence. Learning that the overall height is in compliance, I feel really good about that, especially hearing all the extra precautions you guys have taken. And quite honestly, you know, kids know how to open gates. I mean, they can jump over it, or they can just walk, you know, let themselves in. So I think you guys are, have taken a lot of precautions, and I think that you definitely have satisfied the safety concerns. So, thank you.
Anyone else? A motion on the floor to grant the appeal as requested by the Wilsons? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Kocerog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
I'll make it unanimous. Aye.
With eight votes in the affirmative to grant the appeal, zero votes in the negative and two absent, the appeal has been granted by this Board of Appeals. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this Board of Appeals meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Kocerog. All in favor of adjourned, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned and will momentarily transition to the Committee of the Whole meeting.
I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole for Monday, July 18, 2022, in session. All the aldermen are present, except for Alderman Burkhardt and Alderman Bruno. So I've called it a order. Next order of business is recommend suspending the rules to permit Councilmember Marks to chair this meeting and to vote on all action items on the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion by Alderman Mayor, second.
Second.
Alderman Kocerog. Good enough. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Guess I'm running it.
And you get to vote.
And I get to vote. So there we go. Item number 3A is considered draft resolution authorizing declaration of fire department surplus property. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alderman Kilburg, seconded by Alderman Swanson.
So for your consideration this evening, is a resolution authorizing declaration of fire department surplus property, all the equipment to be declared surplus is obsolete at end of life or otherwise unusable. There was a detailed list in the packet for you to peruse, and I guess if you have any additional questions, we do have Chief Antonori with us tonight.
Any questions, comments for the chief, or for Stephanie?
Just one question. I know that there's been an effort to donate a lot of surplus fire equipment to the Ukrainians. Is any activity like that taking place in Illinois, or is this something that would be practical to even donate?
I'm not sure if there's anything active in Illinois for fire equipment. They've been looking for ambulances and fire trucks and such.
Vehicles.
But we do, we will be working with the Illinois Association of Fire Chiefs. They have a volunteer and combination section for the smaller departments downstate that would take something that we would not be able to use, but it would be welcome at another department. So we'll be running a lot of it through that group and seeing if we can make use of it that way.
Sure. Any other questions for the chief? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll just go with a voice vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 3B is considered draft resolution authorizing execution of a professional engineering service agreement with Baxter and Woodman at a cost not to exceed $61,500 for wastewater plant anaerobic digester engineering services. Is there a motion? Motion by Mayor, second. Second by Alderman Kocerog.
Okay, so in fiscal year 2022, Baxter and Woodman completed the exterior condition assessment of the anaerobic digesters at the wastewater treatment plant. The next phase is to assess the condition of the interior of the digesters. For your consideration this evening, is a professional engineering services proposal from Baxter and Woodman to complete this task at a cost not to exceed $61,500. With us this evening, we have Superintendent Van Gescum, and we also have Brent Perez with Baxter and Woodman.
Any, Alderman Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to hear about what the inside of this thing's going to look like, and how bad of a job that would be. Is that like a dirty job?
Yep, dirty jobs is right, so.
Yeah, what do they have to do on the inside?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well... Brent, you've probably had more experience in actually doing this than I have, so if you want to maybe give her details.
Sounds good. So the anaerobic digesters, it's a concrete structure, and then there's a steel tank on top. One of the steel structures floats on the liquid level, and the other one's a gas holder. So there's a gas bubble. It's an exposed ceiling. It's an attic space. So it's used for digestion of all the biosolids, reducing any vector attraction, so it can be land-applied and beneficially reused. So within here, there's also a lot of inerts that are settled at the bottom, and there's, it is an anaerobic condition, so there is corrosive gases. So this is due to do the inspection, understand what's wrong with it, do any emergency repairs, and then also allow us to budget what it will take to do larger repairs to maintain these covers in service for a longer life.
So this is to figure out what repairs are needed?
Correct.
Okay.
And yes, it will be dirty.
It'll be pretty gross, huh?
Yeah, I would imagine.
All right. Sounds fun.
Alderman Kocerog?
I seem to recall when I got the tour, that, is this the part that's not actually working? Like that plate isn't going up and down like it's supposed to, or one of these two plates?
We've had some problems in the last year with one of the covers tilting, and so we are going to tackle that side first to see why it is, when we lower it to a certain level, all the way down, that it does tilt, so, which makes us think that there is some failure inside there that shouldn't allow that to happen. But that's what you've probably seen here in the past.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, passes unanimously. There you go. Item 3C is considered draft resolution awarding bid and authorizing contract with Hur Construction, Inc., at a cost of $651,792, with up to $65,179.20 in change orders, for a total not to exceed amount of $716,971.20 for sanitary sewer lining project. Motion to put it on the floor by Alderman Swanson, second. Second by Alderman Mayor. Any comments, questions? Paul forgot.
That's okay. So the proposed sanitary sewer lining project will correct structural deficiencies, prevent root intrusion, and seal out groundwater infiltration. The project was advertised, and two bids were received, with the low bid submitted by Hur Construction, Inc., in the amount of $651,792. For your consideration, is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute the contract with Hur Construction for a total not to exceed amount of $716,971.20. And we still have Superintendent Van Gescum, who can answer any additional questions you might have.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, seeing none, a voice vote is going to be sufficient. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3D is considered draft resolution awarding bid and contract to Wayne Point LLC for a total five-year cost of $88,000 for electrical equipment organizational system. Is there a motion? Alderman Mayor makes a motion.
Second.
Second by Alderman Kocerog. Comments, questions, after Stephanie gives us a little brief update.
So a bid was advertised for a software platform to track installed equipment and maintenance cycles for substations and the generation facility. Two companies responded to the bid request, with Wayne Point doing business as Gimba, G-I-M-B-A, submitting the low bid. Staff researched the given references and are confident that Gimba will provide the stated services. For your consideration, is a resolution authorizing a contract award to Wayne Point LLC, doing business as G-I-M-B-A, for a total five-year expense in the amount of $88,000. With us this evening, we have Superintendent Holton, who can answer any additional questions.
Questions, comments for... You're going to get off easy tonight, huh? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll take a voice vote. All in favor of awarding the contract, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is item 3E on the agenda, which is considered draft resolution awarding bid and authorization execution of a contract with Lewis Tree Service in an estimated cost of $215,000 for fiscal year 2023 and 2024 for electric division tree trimming. Do we... Motion by Alderman Mayor? Second by Alderman Cavan. Stephanie, please.
Okay, so a bid was advertised for electric line clearance tree trimming. There were three companies that responded, two with bids and one with a no bid. The low bidder was Lewis Tree Service, as shown on the bid evaluation that was contained in the packet. The rate provided by Lewis are the same as previously reported. A third-year option was also included to be exercised at the city's discretion. And again, Superintendent Holton is with us if you have any additional questions.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, seeing none, a voice, oh, sorry, I apologize.
So is this the same as when we last covered this? It hasn't changed?
Yes, the scope of work, the structure of the contract, everything is identical as it was before.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Swanson?
Thank you. I think it's important that we maintained our process to go through the process of getting the bids, so I appreciate you doing that. I'm glad it came out the same way, and I think going forward, if at all we can, we should put it out, put items like this out for bid. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, seeing none, voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous again. Next item on the agenda is public comment, new business. Is anyone online? Any, anything? Nope. I do believe that we will be, we will need to take, Alderman Maladra, I think you have a motion.
I do.
You should be right, so.
I'd like to move that we go into closed session regarding the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body.
Do I have a motion? I have a motion, do I have a second? Second by Kilburg, and we will need a roll call vote.
Bruno, Burkhardt, Ruby, Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocerog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
We will go into closed session. There will be no action taken tonight. Just so everybody knows that, it is just a discussion, so unanimous. Now we need a motion back into session. I need a motion, go back into open session.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Swanson, seconded by Alderman Kocerog. Roll call? All in favor for returning into open session, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in open session. Nothing else?
We do adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.